Got a lot of paper tonight.
The regular city council meeting on February 12, 2024. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Howser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please all rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Nice to see a nice crowd. We are going to start with public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentation. And if it pleases the council, the presentation from the Friends of the Clinton River Trail, they said they just have a brief presentation, so I thought we'd switch them and let them go first. So why don't you guys come on up and give us your report and welcome?
Thank you. I think I'm representing the team here. But my name is Josh Eichenhorn. I'm Vice President of the Friends of the Clinton River Trail. I'm joined here by Melinda Hill, our President, and our past President Fred Phillips. And I understand John Zelenski's in the room here, and Tom Barnes. So we've got...
Thanks.
So if a fight breaks out, we have a fighting chance.
It's your fault.
I do want to thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update on the Clinton River Trail. Before I do, though, I would like to provide you a quick story that's related, but somewhat personal. In 2020, I made a deal with my kid. I said, hey, he's my 19-year-old kid at the time. I said, if you, I will buy you a bicycle if you agree to ride across the state of Michigan with me. And he took the deal, which was awesome.
So cool.
And we did. We rode the Great Lake to Lake Trail 1, which goes from South Haven to Port Huron. It includes the Clinton River Trail and, of course, includes the city of Rochester. We stayed at the Royal Park Hotel. They provide valet service for bicycles, if you are curious. It was an incredibly enriching and bonding experience, and I'm really grateful for the Great Lake to Lake Trail 1, the Clinton River Trail, and the city of Rochester. But it's interesting. In 2019, before that happened, I noticed that there was this bridge going up, a pedestrian bridge, across M5. It's on the airline trail. And I just noticed that. And so while riding this 2020 trip with my son, it dawned on me that without that bridge, this trip doesn't happen. And without the Clinton River Trail, this trip doesn't happen. And then I started looking at smaller things. I mean, bridges are kind of big. They're hard to miss. But, you know, there were park benches, and there were signs, and there were shelters, and there were restrooms. And then I looked at the trail, and whether it was gravel or asphalt, it was pretty well-maintained. And it dawned on me, because I'm a little slow, that trails just don't happen. People make them happen. And it was at that point, quite literally, that I said, I'm going to figure out who these people are, and I'm going to join them and try to help them. And that's how I became a friend of the Clinton River Trail. And this year, the Clinton River Trail gets to celebrate its 20th anniversary.
Oh, that's cool. Very cool.
In 2004, the five cities that owned the trail, including the city of Rochester, got together and signed a one-page memorandum of understanding, agreeing to maintain their portion of the trail and to meet periodically and work together on areas of mutual interest related to the trail. My friend Fred here informs me that the Friends of the Clinton River Trail view that signing of the memorandum of understanding in 2004 as the birthday of the Clinton River Trail. And so we're turning 20. And frankly, there is nothing more fitting than for us, the Friends of the Clinton River Trail, to come before you, the council members of the city of Rochester, and all those assembled here in the city of Rochester, and thank you for your stewardship of this amazing and important asset. So we're here mostly to thank you. Rochester's role in the Clinton River Trail has been and continues to be incredibly valuable and incredibly important. Since the original acquisition and development of the trail, there have been many enhancements to the trail. Most notably, there have been many enhancements to road crossings. There have been enhancements to bridges. There have been signages put up, markings put up, benches put up, and I could go on and on and on. And all of these things are important. Early, however, the Friends of the Clinton River Trail got together with the cities that own the trail and talked about a common look and feel. And that's where it was agreed on color schemes, logos, and the like, in order to give the Clinton River Trail its unique identity. And this is a good example of how the Friends group and the cities work together for the betterment of the trail and for the benefit of their citizens. And this coordination is ongoing. In fact, this year, all five cities are participating in the Detroit Institute of Art Outside-In Program, which will bring amazing and beautiful artwork to the trail. Melinda Hill, last summer, sent a note to each of the members of the Alliance, each city, with a sample of an application for this outside-in program and encouraged participation. Each city sent in their application, and as a result, the DIA selected every city along the Friends of the Clinton River Trail to participate in this incredible program. This is yet another example of how the Friends group works with the city to make things happen for their citizens, their community, their broader community, and the trail. The Friends of the Clinton River Trail also, and I mentioned this, runs Alliance meetings, where we bring together staff members from the city to meet and talk about what's going on with their city and their activity associated with the trail. We had one of these just last month. It was efficient, that's important, and it was informative. These Alliance meetings are very informative. The Friends of the Clinton River Trail, from time to time, sources volunteer hours or money to help work with the cities with all of their activities and all of their investments with the Clinton River Trail. And I have to tell you that the city of Rochester's activities and investments in this trail has been amazing, and we are extremely grateful. We want to let you know that we noticed this, and we find it to be important, and we are extremely grateful. As much as it's important to talk about our shared past and all the wonderful things that we've done, we also need to talk about our shared future. The maintenance of the Clinton River Trail is almost, if not the same, challenge as it is to build the Clinton River Trail. Okay? And in fact, much of the dollars that have been spent on the Clinton River Trail in recent years have been on resurfacing and improvements and repairs to bridges. This maintenance is an important challenge for all of us, and I want you to know that the Friends of the Clinton River Trail stand ready to face this challenge head-on. I also want to let you know that we believe that the Clinton River Trail is in good hands because it's in your hands. We stand ready to be good partners with you. So I just want to finish with five quick ideas of how you can continue to embrace and engage with the Clinton River Trail. First, let me turn over my page. First, use and enjoy the trail. Nothing demonstrates the value of this trail to our community more than just simply using it. When used, I'm speaking to everyone, the trail speaks for itself. Second, please continue to engage in our Alliance meetings. We recognize that the staff of all of these cities are very busy and have a lot to do. We will make every effort to make these trail meetings, these Alliance meetings, engaging and efficient. Third, encourage residents who are interested in trails to contact us. There is nothing more, that we want more, than to get good input from all of the residents of all of the communities along the trail as we determine what our priorities are going to be. Fourth, help us celebrate the trail's 20th. We're having a party. We're going to have a party on May 22. It's a Wednesday. It's going to be in the evening at Goldner Walsh Nursery on Orchard Lake Road in Pontiac. We have materials that we can leave behind. If I can pick them up, I think they're over here for you. And we are also happy to provide you with electronic versions of this information for you to put on your social media and your website. Fifth, know the Friends of the Clinton River Trail are here and continue to be here to help you continue to nurture and develop and maintain this trail. It was an abandoned railroad. It is now a community treasure. It is a community treasure because of you. It is a community treasure because of you and your neighboring communities who own it, who take care of it, who nurture it, and who share it. And on behalf of my son Eddie, myself, and all of the people, far and near, who use this trail, thank you. And I know Melinda, Fred, I, and others are happy to answer any quick questions that you may have, and then you can obviously go on with your meeting.
Any questions, comments? Councilmember Trent.
I don't really have a question. I have a comment. I had met Melinda Hill when I was door knocking, and that's when I first understood that the Friends of the Clinton River Trail truly are friends. There is no commission overseeing, like the Paint Creek Trailways Commission. So it truly is a labor of love. And to see what you accomplish and how professional this is, I truly, I want to thank you and the Friends, because I love the trails, both of them. And I did not know that difference, and I know that's a heavy lift. And a good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here, and congratulations on the 20th birthday. I think all of the council members are pretty active trail bikers and walkers, and we love our trails. We know our residents love our trails. Today, in the asset management meeting, we are talking about what sort of maintenance do we want to do on the trail? So we've started that debate. Do we consider paving, or do we stick with the natural? So not looking for an answer right now, but just so you know that that is something that council is starting to discuss.
That's awesome. And, you know, I don't know the answer, but we're absolutely happy to engage in the discussion and try to find it with you. And I think it's great. I love that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilmember Howser?
Yeah, sure. Just again, it's been said over, you know, my colleagues here, but you do a fantastic job on that trail system. And I think talking to residents, using the trails, using the parks, is probably one of the top five answers as to why people live in this city here. So it's a remarkable resource. It's a remarkable asset. And thank you to you and your team for doing what you do, because it sincerely is very much appreciated.
Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And this is, I love this trail town. I joke, I don't know if my son told his friends when asked what he did that summer, that he dropped money off in the city of Rochester, but we sure did. And I continue to do so. I was here on Friday with a friend. We rode the Clinton River Trail, and we stopped here for lunch. And, you know, its connection with the other trails, including the Paint Creek Trail, is important. And I think you guys have just done an amazing job in making this a wonderful place to visit and a wonderful place to live.
Thank you.
Well, couldn't have said it better ourselves there. Thank you very much. Thank you, Melinda. Remember, Melinda Hill used to be the President of the Rochester Hills City Council, and now she lives in our city. You jumped ship.
Welcome. We're glad you joined us.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we get started on our main topic, at least for now, is there any public comment not related to something on the agenda tonight?
There's a hand. I think that's Jane.
So, all right, so...
Hello?
Yeah, Ms. Turner, is that you?
That's me.
Welcome.
I don't know how much time I have, but it's on the next thing on the agenda. But I'm concerned about your appointing someone to serve on the city council.
Okay.
Am I going to have a chance to discuss this?
Well, we are going to, in theory, appoint somebody tonight, because the city charter says that we have to do that within 60 days. So do you have a question on that, or a comment?
I have a comment.
Yeah, please, have a comment.
I don't know what the discussion would be. The election was in November. You found out about Gould resigning in December, and why it wasn't either selected by the vote to take the next one below Gould, or, you know, the next one in line, which would have been Peterson.
Right. Well, the charter, again, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So the people spoke. Peterson only lost by 37 votes.
Okay.
The other three people on here who weren't on the ballot, I have no idea who they are.
Okay, well, yeah, any...
And you're taking away my vote.
Well, I think the people...
And I object.
Okay. Well, I think the people who are up here now were elected with the people's votes to make the decision that the charter says we have to make. I guess would be my response.
Not all of them.
Okay. Okay. Duly noted. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay. Yeah, come on up. Jerry.
Good evening. Jerry Handler. I've been working with Nick and Christian.
Hi.
I've been talking to my wife.
How you doing?
I'll pass around a little picture. Just introduce you to my 200-year-old American elm tree. And I'm really here tonight just informationally, things that are affecting the citizens that you may be hearing more about. But I received a letter from my insurance company in mid-January that said they would no longer renew my homeowner's insurance because of my tree. And they recommended severely trimming it back, which Davy Tree would say said would ultimately kill it. So what I'm faced with is bringing it down. And, you know, I've talked to Nick about this. So I have to make a decision probably by the end of this week, just kind of saying if anybody has any ideas to help. But it looks like I'm faced with removing it because I otherwise can't get homeowner's insurance. And it's kind of a sad thing. We've kept it alive for about 40 years, greening the city and supporting all that, to the tune of about $1,000 a year to maintain that tree. And I would dearly love to keep it, but it's looking like I can't.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Question. Have you talked to your agent about changing insurance? Is there another carrier that would pick you up?
Yes, I have. We've worked for about three weeks to do that. Until this afternoon, we did not find a carrier anywhere in the country that would underwrite it. I finally did find a company late this afternoon. They sent me a quote for $23,000 a year for homeowner's insurance to keep the tree.
Did you say yes?
Yeah. And Jerry, what was your address again?
426 West 3rd Street.
Okay, thank you.
Corner of 3rd and Elm.
Thank you.
So there used to be four beautiful elms like this on Elm Street. This is the last surviving one.
Councilmember Howser.
Nice to see you, Sarah. So to give some context, I was contacted by his wife. And essentially, what's happened here is the insurance company has had lots of claims in the area. They've had lots of claims from tree damage. And so what they have said is they're no longer going to issue a policy for this particular house based on the fact that this tree poses too much of a liability in the context of if there is a loss. So I don't know candidly what city council can do, you know, other than make it aware to the other, you know, residents that, hey, this is an issue that's coming up. And I think it's certainly something that I know the city manager has worked with you very closely on to try and come up with a solution. Because the reality is, if it's happening to you now, it's certainly possible it's going to happen to many others later, you know? So I don't know if there's a way to deal with it at the Insurance Commission in Lansing. I don't know if there's a way to do it with your respective agent or your broker. But I want you to understand that it certainly doesn't go unnoticed up here from the sense that, yes, this is obviously an issue, and it's certainly to be something to think about moving forward. And I know Mr. Banda has worked very closely with you guys as well.
He has. You guys have been very helpful.
Thank you.
We've talked to the Insurance Commission. I've talked to the DNR representative for urban forestry.
Wow.
And we just don't have any solutions, unfortunately.
Not good.
Yeah. So that's more for awareness. And of course, if there was any magic in the room, and someone said, I know how to take care of that, but I don't think so.
Councilmember Sage.
Steve's got it.
I guess I'd like to ask our city forester, is the tree sick?
No. No, the tree is perfectly healthy.
Yeah, they've done a good job keeping it going. There's not, there's only two, basically two American elms that big in our town, so.
Okay. And the DNR is in support of taking it down?
No, they don't want to take it down, but they can't get involved in their insurance company, so.
So we would set a precedent here to allow...
No, it's not protected trees, so.
It's not, okay.
Unfortunately.
What's a protected tree?
We have, actually, we have elms that can't be. So when they get to the point where they get dangerous, so it's not, it doesn't meet the landmark status, even though it's 200 years old. That doesn't automatically make it meet that. Even if it did, that would be a bigger problem for us if we tell them you can't take it down, but the insurance companies tell them to take it down, so.
Right. The tree is, it was this big when I bought it 40 years ago. You know, we've maintained it and all. But now it's just seen as too great a liability to keep. So, FYI.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the support, Nick.
Thanks.
And Christian.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
It's good to know what the insurers are doing these days.
Thank you.
It's all about the money. But we knew that, right? All right. Next is a nomination appointment for the vacant city council seat with a term expiring November 2025. So we had, as Ms. Turner said, we had an election, and former councilmember Gould was elected to a four-year term. He unfortunately had to, was transferred to Dallas, Texas. So he had to resign. So there is an open seat. So even though he won a four-year term, this is a seat is for a two-year term, so it would be up in 2025. And we'll have a normal election in 2025 for four seats, and then we will have a special election for that seat. Fairly complicated, but probably don't need to go into that tonight. But it is up in 2025. The city council, the charter says the city council shall appoint a replacement in 60 days. There is no criteria on who should get it. It's up to the city council according to charter. So we set, we've done, unfortunately, we've done this a few times before. I've done this a few times before. We've had openings, and we gave people to, councilmember Gould resigned in January, and we said, you have to the end of January to put in a word with the city clerk that you were interested. And then people had the choice to reach out, meet with us, not meet with us, whatever people wanted to do. I think there's five candidates. Is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
There's five candidates who put in for it. So tonight, we have offered everybody who put in that they had an interest to give a brief presentation tonight. You do not have to do that. It's just, it is your choice. It is up to you. You can come in if people have questions. If not, people have questions. And then when people are done, then I will go to the city council, and there will be nominations or whatever the city council decides to do. So first council, is there any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. So if anybody would like to go first, Sarah King, why don't you come on up and give your presentation? And welcome to, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Sarah King, 120 Greg Street, Rochester. City council members, it's my honor tonight to address you this evening for consideration in filling the vacant city council seat and to ask for your support. I was lucky enough to have been born in Rochester. I lived here most of my childhood, moved away for a couple of years to go to Michigan State University, where I got my degree in finance. From there, I started my career in Chicago. But my husband and I, who was also a Rochester resident growing up, we decided to return to Rochester and start our family here. We now have two daughters who attend North Hill University, or North Hill Elementary. And when I tell people about Rochester and why we moved back home, I always talk about the vibrant downtown that we have, the walkability, everything that there is to do with the farmer's market, the big bright light show, the parks, the trailways. I'm a big user of the trailways. The planning commission knows that I'm always talking about the bike racks. And the library. And it's funny, because people laugh when I, like, tell them on Rochester. And I'm like, no, our library is awesome. The programming that they do for children, and I think for all ages, is just incredible. So we've really benefited for that, from that. And I think Rochester is really just a special place with all it has to offer and the strong sense of community that it has. For the past 17 years, I've worked in financial services. I still do. I have had the opportunity to support business owners and help them grow their businesses and invest in their communities by providing access to capital and financial guidance. During this time, I've been compelled to give back to my community by supporting the Rochester area neighborhood house, cleaning up the trailways, volunteering in the schools. And I've had the pleasure of serving on the planning commission for the past three and a half years, at time with Mr. Sage, Mr. Howser, and Mayor Bixson. As a member of the planning commission, I've had the privilege of also working closely with the city administration and the community to help shape the future of Rochester. Through diligent research, collaboration, and thoughtful consideration, I have gained a deep understanding of the unique needs of our community. I have been an advocate for maintaining the charm and character of this community while also supporting responsible development and sustainable practices that will benefit the residents and the businesses of the city. I've also supported the city's ability to protect against failed development by requiring bonding for developers. And I've learned a lot about the city operations through my time on the planning commission. I feel I'm a strong candidate to fill the vacancy by leveraging my financial background, focus on fiscal responsibility, and my deep appreciation for this community. I welcome the opportunity to collaborate with you as a champion for the residents of this community, uphold the values of transparency and inclusivity, and work tirelessly to ensure Rochester continues to flourish for years to come. So thank you very much for letting me speak. And I welcome any questions, if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. King?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jessica, come on up.
Feels like such a long walk.
Yeah.
I'm Jessica Clauzer. I live at 516 Ludlow Avenue with my husband Mark and my two little ones, Ella and Russell, who are here. So good evening, everyone. I want to start by thanking the city for this opportunity. It is an honor to be considered for the vacant seat of Councilman Gould. And I'm here tonight to ask for your support to join the Rochester City Council. As a dedicated member of the community, I am committed to leveraging my background in public policy and strategy to contribute meaningfully to our community's governance. I have a bachelor's in business management from Northwood University and a master's in public policy from the University of Michigan. I've worked with the city of Detroit on developing an equitable and sustainable public lighting system. I worked for the United States Embassy to the United Nations in the Economic and Scientific Affairs Department in Geneva, Switzerland. And I have over 10 years of experience at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, which is the largest health insurance company in Michigan, and where I work today. I started at Blue Cross in government affairs, where I analyzed healthcare policy and developed advocacy positions on behalf of the enterprise. I'm currently the Managing Director of Strategy for Medicare Business, which is, which serves our, one of the nation's most vulnerable populations, our seniors. When I'm asked often by my kids and others, what strategy is, what does that mean, what do you really do, I always tell them that, simply put, I plan for the future. I'm responsible for developing a vision and tactical plans to effectively deliver on goals that get us to where we want to be. Outside of my professional experience and training, I'm an active community member. I am president of the Long Meadow Elementary PTA. Talk about stressful positions. Be on the PTA. Before the president, I was treasurer, and then before that, I was on the legislative committee. I was the chair of the legislative committee. I'm on the board of Impact 100. It is an organization of women that come together to give large impact grants to nonprofits in the community. Last year, I am happy to say, I was appointed to the Rochester City Beautiful Commission and have truly enjoyed my time on the CBC and getting to know the city better. I volunteered at OPC Meals on Wheels. I volunteer... I volunteered at OPC Meals on Wheels, I volunteer with the Pollinators, and I've already knocked on doors a few times for candidates in local elections. And I think I've attended almost every event Rochester has to offer, including Arts and Apples and Halloween Hoot, Dinosaur Hill. We put our car into the Rocket Rod Show every year, so we are soaking it in and just loving the city, as I'm sure everyone in the room does. So, if given the opportunity to be on city council, I would bring to the role my formal training in policy analysis and strategic planning to really help drive evidence-based decision-making, which aligns, I think, very well with the responsibility of the council. I'd bring my ability to navigate complex issues and my ability to bring people together to collaborate, to develop effective solutions. I think the city of Rochester has capacity to innovate, and that's really exciting to me, I don't think you always have that space in local government. And so, I would bring a fresh perspective and innovative mindset to council and keep asking, what else can we do? One of my favorite things that we say at Blue Cross is do differently, do better. And then, I also bring enthusiasm and a passion for community leadership. From what I've shared, you can probably tell I've had an interest in government for quite a while. When we moved to Rochester, you know, I started a stepped approach to getting more involved and integrating myself into the community, from volunteering to now being on a city board. And I have every intention of continuing that journey, whether it be tonight or in a few years campaigning. I have every intention to pursue that path, so. For those reasons, I know I would make an excellent replacement for Councilman Gould, and I'd be honored to have your support. Thank you, and opened any questions?
Thank you. Any questions tonight?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
I was remiss to, I was just remiss to say that all of our candidates are excellent, we have an embarrassment of riches, as we used to say. So, we are blessed in our community. Come on up, Dan.
The long walk around.
The shorter way is this way, but that's okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was going to walk in front, but I didn't want to be that guy, so. My name is Dan Bachmann. Thank you to the council members for an opportunity to introduce myself to the community and share my motivation for seeking appointment. You know, really, it's a personal sincere desire to give back to the community. And I think more practically speaking, you never know what kind of interest you're going to receive in these things. So, I wanted to provide city council with a viable option that would offer some continuity. I've, I've worked on many collaborations with a couple council members over the years and have strong rapport with those individuals. And so, I, I felt I, if needed, would fit in to, to provide a constructive option for you moving forward. I, I also happen to represent two of the strongest growth demographics in Rochester, forty-somethings and families with young children, for what that's worth, if anything. But, I'll briefly share some of my skills and experience that I think would be transferable to the work of city council. Most of my adult life, I've been self-employed, my primary business, like, Mrs. King, is it? Is in financial services, so, personal financial planning, I've been practicing that for 19 years, the last 14 of which, as a certified financial planner practitioner, which requires a fiduciary standard of care, something that would be a valuable mindset to a council member's role. I directly manage and safeguard client assets that exceed 18 times that of the city's general fund and about three times that of the aggregate balance of all city funds. So, no stranger to prudent financial management, perhaps the most important oversight role city council has. My secondary business is consultation to an office of supervisory jurisdiction. Two other registered principals and I supervise 222 financial advisors across five states to help safeguard $16 billion in client assets. In this role, I'm immersed in compliance, policy, and legislative impact. I, I serve my community now in, in different ways, but most extensively as the direct, as a director of the Stony Point Homeowners Association. The Board of Directors has seen fit to appoint me each of the past three years to serve as the association's president. Some of my responsibilities include steering seven committees, two of which I chair, architecture and legal. And the scope of those two committees has a lot of parallels to what Mrs. King does on the planning commission and Mr. Hauser. One of my early initiatives was to create a 15-year capital expenditure forecast to really identify the accrual needs of our community. And we recognized that we were, we were behind, but we didn't really understand how much. And that process has allowed us to really make some prudent financial decisions for the community and increase our accrual reserves 103% in the last four years. There's a lot I can tell you about our association and the accomplishments, but in the interest of time, and to give maybe some other candidates an opportunity to speak as well, I want to share, I think, what is maybe a significant deficiency of my candidacy, and, you know, the previous two candidates have some extensive service with the community. And I don't think that's an absolute requirement to serve on city council, but I expect most, if not all of you council members had extensive service with the city before you entered your current role, and I know these candidates too. And, you know, were I in your seat, I would place a high value on that, so. I want you to recognize that I don't have that experience with the city. Although I have interacted with many of the city personnel and, and different departments for association needs, I have not served directly with the city. So, if you find, which I expect you probably will, another candidate to be more qualified than myself, I would just ask that you consider me for a role on a commissioner board, so that I can serve in that way. And I thank you for your time and consideration, are there any questions?
Thank you very much, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't realize HOA's had legal department.
They do. And they have legal counsel.
I think we have two other potential candidates.
I think David's out of town.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. I am here tonight to say thank you for this opportunity as well. I am asking for your vote tonight for this appointment to fill the vacancy left by councilperson Douglas Gould. I proudly served on council for, from 2015 to 2023, serving the residents and the businesses that elected me to serve. I also ran a remarkably successful election in November with only 37 votes separating me from a seat. With the overwhelming support of the residents' votes, I will always be humbled. This resignation of councilperson Gould has only been 63 days from the election. And it is important to note that the city has had times like this in the past where a councilperson had to leave their elected seat shortly after an election, as it has been noted. In 2010, City Manager James Vetrano, at that time, had that happen as well with the leaving of then-councilperson Mattis's seat. He stated it was documented that a process has been set with the resignation of councilmember Kothulik. This was just after 20, the 20, 2007 election, at the meeting of December 10th of 2007. An election had taken place in November and his resignation was received. At the December 10th, 2007 meeting, Mayor Bixson was asked what the process would be, and it was stated in the minutes. It was recommended council accept resumes for the position until the end of December and consider the issue at the January 14th, 2008 meeting. Mayor Bixson added that resumes would then be forwarded to council members in a timely manner, then they could take it upon themselves to contact the applicants and be prepared to possibly make an appointment at the January 14th, 2008 meeting. At that time, a motion was made and motion was carried to accept that resignation. So, at the January 14th, 2008 meeting, the city council was in the same position as you are tonight, choosing a qualified individual for the vacancy. Councilperson Mattis, who is now the Honorable Judge Mattis, states in the minutes that it is very, it is a very important decision. We have many qualified people who step forward for the position then, as we do now. We are called upon to make a tough decision. I think it is appropriate to explain how, how he came to his decision. He feels, he felt as an elected official, he needed to listen to the people of Rochester. We had an election, and in that election, David Zemins was the highest vote getter of the candidates who was not elected. There was a significant gap between Zemins and the next person. And had Mr. Kothulik resigned before the election, the people of Rochester would have put David Zemins on the city council. He also stated it was important that you look at qualifications. So, the other council members agreed, and Mayor Bixson stated, I know many of the people who applied, it's same, same today. They're all, they are all qualified. Mr. Zemins campaigned during the election to earn the support of the people, and I think Mr. Zemins is a good choice. Mayor Bixson called for a role, all supported, and motion was carried. And these are all minutes taken directly from the minutes. To note, in the 2007 election, Mr. Zemins was 198 votes from the fourth seat. And I understand tonight's council has a tough decision to make. I ask that you look at what the voters of the city of Rochester did in the past election and make your decisions based on the voice of the residents. And I ask you to consider my qualifications. Not only do I have the eight years of solid council experience, but I also went above and beyond to educate myself to best represent the community. Working on cutting costs, balancing budgets, planning commission, city beautiful, historical, Ra-Ra, DDA, sister city committee, infrastructure, budget and finance, facilities, and dinosaur hill. I have been an ambassador and advocate for our area, ensuring projects reflect our community and that tax dollars were spent wisely and essential services were a top priority and questions were asked and answered for the public. I collaborated with past councils and administrations, demonstrating my leadership skills time and again, finding resolutions to issues, negotiating opportunities for Rochester, and always keeping the residents and businesses my primary focus. As a longtime resident and real estate broker, I understand our community, the residents and businesses, and how to best serve their needs and find the balance necessary to serve, and find the balance necessary to sustain our community now and into the future. From the three-year financial planning, finding funding for infrastructure and for building essential buildings to preserve our assets, both employees and equipment alike. Understanding that a stable community is one with outstanding police, fire, and DPW. Providing with promoting, providing and promoting public safety, health and welfare with a strong reliable infrastructure and serving the best interests of the overall community was always top of mind. The voters of the city showed their overwhelming support of my candidacy, as you are aware, and my experience and dedicated service to the community was noted in this election, and I would truly be honored to be appointed to fill this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further comment? Is there a hand up, or is that?
Yes, there's a, there was a caller with the number ending in 223, that has their hand up.
Go ahead, 223. Are you there? You need to mute, you need to unmute, mute. Are you there? Ryan, any help there?
Yeah, I can only, I cannot unmute callers, but I did ask to unmute.
Okay. 223. David, how are you? Welcome.
Oh, okay.
We can hear you.
User error, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, David Broletich, 310 Elm, I have submitted my name also. Thank you for this opportunity, I regret I cannot be there in person this evening. Slightly off topic, I would like to say that Jerry is my neighbor, and that beautiful tree that he spoke about at the beginning of the meeting is basically in my side yard also. So, I hope that somehow we could put our heads together and figure out how to save that, it's one of my favorites, but. Back to the topic at hand, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as city council is aware, I did run for office this past fall. The tenants of my campaign were fiscal responsibility and accountability, reasonable economic growth, and something I call keep it Rochester. Protect our police and fire, our parks, our trails, support our local businesses, and maintain that small-town feel that we all enjoy while living here. The experience that I bring is 25 years as a global IT executive. I manage contracts, relationships, people, delivering financials for accounts exceeding $100 million in revenue. My compensation is successful based on how well I did these things, and I was very successful. This allowed me to retire at the age of 57, and now my desire is to bring these skills to bear for the city of Rochester, to represent the people and to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there any further comments?
Hi there, guys.
Hey.
Hi.
Marie Lucas, 1121 North Oak, I mailed all of you. And really, everything's been said that I was going to say, but briefly. You know, Ann did come in really close to winning, and she's done a terrific job for the city of Rochester. She loves Rochester, she really cares about it, and I think that she needs to be put back on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you again. Further comments? Hands.
More hands.
Brian?
Unmute, please.
It's the same numbers, 223 and 651.
They've already talked.
They've already spoken, okay. Okay, we, we will close, we will close the public comment before we go to council, just one thing. As we've done in the past, the, the person who, if we appoint a person tonight, they will take office at the next meeting. They can be sworn in and start doing things, but it seems, doesn't seem fair to ask somebody who's maybe didn't have a chance to prepare themselves to, to, to do that, so. If, if you're chosen, you can stay or not stay, but, but be there the next, the next meeting. And I think we're ready for discussion in the council, so, council.
Do you mind if I go first?
Councilmember Hauser.
So, this is particularly personal for me, because I, as many of you may know or may not know, did the same thing several years ago, there was two vacancies, I applied for both of them, and I did not get it. And it was very difficult, you know, to, to go through that process, but what I did learn is that if that opportunity didn't present itself, I was able to go and continue to serve the city and, and help out through various boards and commissions. And so, to all the applicants who have submitted their names for consideration, I want you to know I really appreciate what you've done, because it takes a lot of effort, a lot of energy to go up to that lectern and, and put yourself out there for consideration, and, and the hardest part for me frankly was the people that I went up against, Marilyn being one of them, they're my friends, they're my neighbors, they're my colleagues, and they're people that I very much respected and still do, and, and I was like, geez, you know, we, we're all vying for that same position, we're all vying for that same opportunity to help the city. And let's be very candid, there's five excellent candidates who have submitted their names for, for, for consideration, but we can only pick one, okay, there's only one vacancy, and to those four individuals who, who are not going to be selected, I can't tell you enough, please don't let this be the end of your effort to give back to the city. There is so much talent in the five people who spoke tonight, that any one of them would be fantastic to fill that empty seat over there. But that being said, obviously, we have a job to do, and we have to pick someone. Under the city charter, it states that within 60 days, a person who possesses the qualifications required to be an office holder of city council has to be selected. Well, candidly, all of you are qualified, all of you are more than capable. I've known many of you from working with you, but I've known Sarah King for quite some time. I've known Sarah King for, for, for many years working on planning commission, so at this time, I'd like to nominate Sarah King to fill the vacancy expiring in November of 2025.
Okay, so, point, uh, Mrs. City Clerk, does it have to be a second?
I think if we handle this the same way...
Um, I think if we handle this the same way we do the mayor elections, I think you take the nominations and we take the votes in order of the nominations.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Sarah King.
Do you get a discussion, or no?
Yeah, good discussion.
Oh, sorry. Well, it is personal for me as well, and having been that other person, I'm glad that councilmember Hauser said what he said, but I'm just gonna add a few more points that I went through this process in August 2022. And I do appreciate the dedication and commitment by all these highly qualified individuals who have expressed their interest in serving our community. And it's just to me, I, this is what I love about community, that there's so many of you in the audience, it would be too sad to me to not see this amount of engagement. The decision is so difficult, and it, the abundance of the exceptional talent among these candidates is, that bring their unique perspectives and valuable skills is phenomenal. So, and I think that this appointment is a testament to the city's wealth of capabilities of the people who've come forward. So, for those who will not be selected, I want to thank you for your passion and dedication to civic engagement and community betterment. So, your commitment does not go unnoticed, and in two years, there will be five open positions, so all, you can all run. So I expect to see you with the same amount of dedication it takes, I know I just did it. So the, so I would ask those of you who are not on boards and commissions to continue either to apply for more or beyond them. So, thank you for your interest in serving. That's all I gotta say.
Anything further? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Just a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. So, not that there's any, I mean, we went through, there's really no directive on how to do this process. If you were going to do the model of the mayor and the mayor pro temp, you can either do it the way you are, you have one nominee, and you can bring that to a vote, or you can see if there's other nominees, and then do the vote in order. It's, I just throw that out there as another option, you can do whichever way you would like.
Thank you. Are there any other nominees? Madam Clerk, the roll on the voting on the Sarah King nomination.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. So Sarah King is appointed to a term expiring in 2025. Congratulations, Sarah.
Welcome, Sarah.
Mayor Pro Temp, Salvia.
Thank you. I'd just like to, once again, congratulate everyone who put their name in and encourage you to step up for a board and commission. Public service is an honor to serve in our great community, so thank you for putting yourself out there tonight.
Councilmember Hauser.
Again, to Jessica, and Ann, and Dan, and Mr. Bachman, David, apply for commissions. There's gonna be an opening of planning commission, there might be two openings on planning commission now. I'm telling you, submit your name, submit your qualifications, send them in to the mayor, send them into the city, do not hesitate to do that. Every one of you is more than qualified to be on several boards and commissions. The city needs people like you, so please apply and get involved, and I'm telling you, it's a step, and a step, and a step, and it's gonna happen, I promise you. Thank you.
And I think there will be two openings on the planning commission, and the next meeting, we'll be making two appointments for that.
Yeah.
So please get your applications in. Next is approval of the minutes, in consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2024, and also to be included in the meeting of February 26th, 2024.
So moved.
Wait, Your Honor, the minutes themselves will be presented at the next meeting. They weren't in the packet.
So it's not on the packet. So, just skip it.
Yeah.
Just skip it, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Okay, next is approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration to approve the Detroit congenital heart walk. Next is a consideration to approve the OPC 5K Run Walk for Meals on Wheels. Next is a consideration to approve the Scare Away Hunger 5K Run fundraiser for the Rochester Area Neighborhood House. Everybody better get in shape for all these races.
This is like a lot.
Next is a consideration to approve the Nisa Columbus Tutschi Roll fundraiser. Next is a consideration to approve the Color of Wellness 5K Run. Next is a consideration to approve the North Oakland Dance Company event. I think that's to watch dancing, not to actually dance. Next is a consideration to approve the O'Connor St. Patrick's Day event, which isn't too far off. Next is a consideration to approve the Rockin' Rods in Rochester event, and next is a consideration to approve the St. Baldricks Festival.
I have a few questions in there. Is that possible?
Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Jones.
So, just a couple of questions. Obviously, at first I thought that the requests were only for park, obviously, they're for anything going on in our town, which I noticed by all of these. So they are applying for permits. I'm just curious, 'cause there's different prices, obviously, the fire chief and the police chief must decide how many labor hours involved, is that, okay, that's how, 'cause Rockin' Rods is a lot of a cost, so that has to do with the barricades and the blocking off roads and everything. I do wanna say, and you'll appreciate this, Scare Away Hunger has two porta potties, so we are grateful for that. So it seems like they are, they are starting to change that. And then, the only one I was curious about is O'Connor's. I know they have their own security, and then it sounds like the other festival that's at Corner Bar has their own security, so they must not have extra police involved in that?
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So we have pre-meetings with both groups, and sometimes we will add if necessary, but they've both taken on their own, with the guidance of our police chief, we meet, have a program, but if they can handle it, they can handle it. So, especially St. Patrick's Day, that's kind of the whole town. So we have folks around a lot. St. Baldricks, not so much, but, yeah, so they have their own, but we can supplement. If we do, then they pay for that.
Okay, because when they put down for O'Connor's, 3,000 to 4,000 people, that --
It's a lot.
-- people. But then it seems like the other one, because they also are sponsoring the one at Corner Bar, they must be having kind of two events going on, I would assume, that's how that rolled out, okay. And the Corner Bar one didn't put down estimated attendance, I don't know if that's something that's required, but.
Chris is here, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, Mayor, if we could. Thank you.
Good chance to explain what it is, also.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
I'd like to bring my partner, Mike, who's from the St. Baldricks charity. Why don't you first briefly tell them a little bit about the charity, and then I can answer any questions about the logistics.
Sure. Last year, we did host the first event in Rochester, but this will be our 17th year hosting events across metro Detroit. The St. Baldricks Foundation is an international charity focused on childhood cancer research, which is, their focus is filling a funding gap, because less than 8% of all cancer research is focused on children's specific cancer. So, St. Baldricks Foundation, over the last 25 years, has become the largest independent grantor of research dollars for childhood cancer, doing over $340 million in the first 25 years. The events that we've hosted over the last 17 years have raised $3 million locally. And what we're trying to do is, as these events grow, we want to build Rochester to be one of the biggest in the country. So we would hope, it's usually tagged around St. Patrick's Day, because it's called St. Baldricks, it's not affiliated with a religion. It was more about two reinsurance executives that did a challenge to raise money for childhood cancer 25 years ago, and 600 million head shaved later. This is where it's at. It's all these different events that happen across the country and some around the world. So, second year in Rochester, we're hoping, being back around St. Patrick's, last year we did it in May, which is a little bit off, we hope to get about 1,000 to 2,000 people throughout the course of the program. But the nice thing is, is everyone that signs up to shave their head at the event, we schedule their time, so we can do traffic flow through the whole thing. So we'll usually do like a 15 to 30-minute window, or we'll turn over barber chairs, so that we don't ever have more than, say, 500 or 600 people around that area at one time.
Okay, I didn't know that was it, okay.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, so how was, how was it last year? Because I was here, we approved it, and we thought it was great.
It went really well for May, the weather was kind of dodgy, but we still did $26,000, which is pretty good for a first year.
That is good. Well, thank you for coming back.
Thank you. And we're already committed, we've already got 15,000 committed towards a $60,000 goal.
Wow.
And so if we get those two days, I think we'll be able to blow past that pretty easy.
Wow, that's great.
Great. Mayor Pro Temp, Salvia.
Thank you. Yeah, I had some similar questions to councilmember Jones, because I know, you know, this is around the St. Patrick's Day time, and I know our other St. Patrick's Day event, even though yours is not St. Patrick's, it's St. Baldricks, they did have 30 to 45 private security. Do you have an estimate on the amount of security you're gonna have?
Based on last year, we're gonna be securing the tent area in the road that, I believe you have diagrams.
Right, and we're shutting, we're shutting the street, right?
Of it down, yes. And so based on our effort inside the bar, which will be handled separately, the event, we're looking at probably 12 to 18 people to secure that space in the street, in the road. And we think that'll be more than sufficient.
Yeah, our audience is pretty different, probably 20% of it are students that shaved, and their families that come out to support them, so it is a young crowd.
Nice, nice. And then the other question I had was really for Chief. You know, there are some different costs for all of these events, so I just wanted to confirm, we're using the same, I'll say, methodology that Chief Steve used, we haven't changed our formula or anything like that.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, the formula has not changed, and when we get these event packets, they're submitted to all the administration, and we look at potential costs, it includes the DPW. Usually, it's the DPW, fire and police. In this situation, I know there's two events going on at the same time, but we're gonna have extra police patrol anyways, because it's St. Patrick's, St. Patty's Day, so we're gonna be doing a lot of traffic enforcement out there. And if these businesses need us to come there, we're gonna come there. And I talked to Chris before, and we're gonna just, we're not gonna have anyone assign there since he has his own security, however, we're just gonna go there in our own, hang out for a little while. And if things get out of hand, which I hope they do not, we'll be there to support it. So no matter what, we'll support both events at the same time. But yes, to answer your question, is we do evaluate every event, and there are costs associated. Most of the events, there's no costs, it's, especially if they stay in the park, but once we have to start closing streets down, and putting barricades up, taking them down, and doing traffic control, and the fire department helps us block streets, or they're out in the street with their medical cart, that's where the costs come in, so.
That covers it, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is there a motion?
We do invite all the officers to come out for a free haircut.
Oh, okay.
We had a few, a few fire departments came and supported.
So it's bald, like shaved heads, is what we're talking? Okay.
Yeah, this'll be my 18th-year-going bald.
Exhibit A. Exhibit A, right?
Oh, yeah.
But we expect to see you there.
Yeah.
A little trim.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Mayor Pro Temp, Salvia.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I as presented, and just can't wait to see all these amazing events in our community. Thank you, thank you for bringing them.
I support.
Support by councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. There are no old business or table audience tonight, there is not a public hearing or legislative deliberations, we're onto reports and regular business, consideration of a service agreement with the Rochester Hills Museum. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the follow-up from when Pat McKay came and talked to us a little bit, so we formalized this, Ken Howard, their parks director, met with staff, and we went over the, I know, Mr. Sage, I think you got your answer today to what you asked. So this is, just lays out what their responsibilities, what our responsibilities are. Jeff, you took a look at it, Attorney Cratt took a look at it. So we're in support of formalizing this document, and authorize us to sign on our behalf, they have already signed on their behalf.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Temp, Salvia.
Okay, so, we all love the museum, so in here, there is an ask for $40,000, and I don't see a general ledger, where would this be in the budget?
I guess it's on here. So, it's, it's in the budget, I don't know the exact GL number, but it's been budgeted for the last two years, so.
So we had $10,000.
Right, and then the city council, they came and asked for the 40, that got put into this fiscal year, and this is also to move forward, so it should be in there.
Do you remember that?
I do.
Mayor Trent?
Oh, yeah, they came here and asked for $40,000.
You remember them coming and asking?
I remember them coming.
For the archiving, yeah.
For the archiving.
No.
And there's no, there's no budget item listed in the memo.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, my, my memory is that it was $10,000 already, you know, for the archiving, and then $30,000 was the additional ask or offer, and 15 came from DDA, and 15,000 came out of our budget. That was, that's my memory.
And so this should be in our 2025 budget that we're looking at right now? I guess I'm only asking because I'm a little confused, we're in the season of budget asks, and yet, I know we have to approve an agreement, but.
So it was at last year's budget, I don't have the, I'm not sure, and it's in the next year's budget, we'll be forthcoming, we committed to this.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I also remember that discussion, and we did agree to split it with the DDA. Right. And the DDA agreed to that as well, so.
But I guess we need to see that in the, in the request.
We can, well, I'll have somebody fill in the rest of the numbers here, we can bring back to the next meeting, not a problem.
I mean, I think, I think there's support for the agreement, and there's support that, you know, the city attorney has reviewed it, I just think we're looking for clarity on which budget item it's hitting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question.
Councilmember Jones?
So, it said in the agreement that there would be no charge to use a museum for events for the city, so does that mean we can do any events there for free? It's kind of what it said in the agreement, I just wanted to confirm that. Is that part of our funding, is that we're allowed to use it? So we might, I just want to confirm that.
Mr. City Manager, is that?
I'll take that.
Mr. City Attorney?
The, the, councilmember Jones is referring, I took a look at that as well, is, it doesn't have a specific, like, limitation, but it was, you can do that, you can, it was a general to use the facility to facilitate city programs or events, and I can certainly find that momentarily, because I know it's, it's in here, it's, I'll say it's a loose, a loose agreement with the, with them, but if you, if you give me one second, I can certainly find where that, where that says it. Okay, here, it's paragraph two, it says, this is really where the obligations are, the duties, it says, "The museum is responsible for providing historical programs both about and in the city, providing historical displays at the museum about the city, and make the museum available for significant city events upon mutually agreed upon dates." And I think the first one that I'm aware of is the State of the City that I just, I just caught wind of, so.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that that was part of the agreement.
That is, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. City Manager, we bring this back to the next meeting. Okay, next is the consideration of acceptance of the Rochester Emergency Risk Assessment. Mr. City Manager?
Chief Johns gonna come up and explain this. Lucky we didn't get the whole package, I think, Chief, it's 765 pages of federal stuff, so, Chief, we're down to, I think, six.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the City Manager's right, I tried to make it easy reading for you instead of all 765 pages.
Thank you.
It took us about six months to go ahead and put together, along with Oakland County. Every five years, we do a risk assessment for the city through, being sponsored, excuse me, through Oakland County. We take a look at the possibilities, and we've heard council talk about the Black Swan event, about what could possibly happen. We look at everything from tornadoes, power outages, chemical spills, fires, and also our aging infrastructure. Within our list, we go ahead and we try to do some open thinking about what are some of the things that could possibly happen within the city, and those are identified as risks. as risks. We try to go ahead and take a look at what are some of the things that we can do to mitigate the risk. Mitigation goes everything from what police and fire and the DPW do in regards to preventive maintenance, preventive inspections, what the planning commission does when we start taking a look at developments, making sure that we have the right infrastructure and things put together. And not all cases can we go ahead and solve the problems. If you take a look at the amount of money that's potentially there, it's millions of dollars. It's not saying that we have to go spend that money to go ahead and close out the risk, but I will tell you that the only way that we'll see federal funding and our FEMA grants is by having an approved plan. Now, how is that going to help us? So currently, after we, after we put together the risk assessment, I had some meetings with Oakland County, and they encouraged us to put together what's called a BRIC grant, building redundancy or resiliency in communities. And we put forward an initial grant for design working with DPW in regards to doing some engineering to do storm sewer and also bank improvements on the Paint Creek River because of the, what's going on in gaze of erosion. First step was we put a grant together and it's been submitted to the state. They, they look at it first, they have to approve it, and then they pass it on to the feds. And the initial grant is for a little over two hundred thousand dollars to do the engineering to take a look at fixing stormwater problems and the bank on the Paint Creek. That's our phase one. Our phase two would be if we get that grant approved, we would then go over into the next year grant to go ahead and seek the three or four million dollars that would take to go ahead and institute the fixes. The good news is if we get the initial grant, there's no guarantees, obviously, in federal government, but we have a pretty good chance of getting the other money. But I will tell you, we don't get the points for our grant if we don't have an executed risk plan. It's still, whether we execute it or not, it's the right business to do for our citizens and for the longevity of the city of Rochester to have a plan to where we've looked at the potential risk and that we're planning to go ahead and mitigate it and take care of it. That'll keep Rochester alive for the next hundred years and more for the future of the rest of our community. So in front of you, I took out the seven or eight pages of the risks that we identified for the city of Rochester, and you'll see it's everything from a simple building fire downtown, which is never simple, all the way up to chemical releases and flooding. We've identified those risks. We've worked on risk plans. We've tried to go ahead and set some priority as far as severity of the risk. And we've done some scientific guesses on what the potential cost would be. So the ask for City Council for your consideration tonight is to accept the plan, and if so, to go ahead and pass a resolution that we then can go ahead and submit to the county, which will then be attached to all of our future grants. And it will catch up to the grant that we currently have within the state right now. And they realize that we're working along with all of the other communities in Oakland County to go ahead and have resolutions passed. Each individual count, or each individual city is responsible for processing their own resolution. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Council? Councilmember Trent?
Yes, the, the erosion on the Paint Creek, is that the one behind the library?
Yes.
At the Paint Creek condos?
Yes.
So the Paint Creek condos have no skin in the game, or is it?
I'm sorry, they have no what?
Skin in the game so much, so to say. Are they in contact or how? I mean, is it?
Nope.
It's our responsibility, then? I just.
Well, it's, in fact, not too long ago, about twenty years ago, actually, a building had to be torn down there because of the bank erosion. So it's not the private property, it's the public waterway.
Okay. I just was, yeah, I, I had a couple of, I had a resident that lives there ask me about it, and I wasn't, I didn't know what you were doing. But, you know, great, it's great you're doing something about it. Yeah, help mitigate it. There were more erosion. Thanks.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an extension of a proactive plan we started before to get us to that first grant opportunity.
Yeah, so this is my third, since I've been here for a while, this is my third risk assessment plan that we put together. It was done prior to me coming to the city by the previous administration. So every five years, we take a look at this. This has been going on now for about twenty-five years.
Based on that, I would, I will support this resolution.
Is that a motion?
I will make it a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Sage.
I'll support that.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try to bring home the money.
Thank you.
Okay, get the grants.
Next is a consideration request to purchase a replacement Ford F-30350 for the Water Division. Mr. City Manager?
Council, this seems like an easy one, but if you read our DPW director's memo, it triggered a whole bunch of different thoughts now that we want to talk about with you. So there's replacing the truck, obviously, the money involved, now a color that's come up. But this isn't the first time this has come up, but being fiscally prudent, I appreciate that Alec took the time to look at what's the most fiscally prudent way to do this yet, give us the opportunity. There's a way to make the truck green, but it costs you ten or eleven thousand dollars. So I'll let Alec go over that.
Alec, welcome.
Mayor, councilmembers, tonight, city staff requesting the city council approve the purchase of a Ford F-350 for the amount of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That's a government price of sixty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-one for the truck itself, Ford F-350 Super Duty from LaFonte Ford Birch Run. They happen to have a truck in their lot right now, which is convenient for us because this truck was scheduled to be replaced this year, but it was also hit by a private vehicle just about a month ago. So I include some pictures in my memo of the current damage, the driver's side door latches, but it's not a comfortable ride for Cory right now as he does all this important Water Division duties. So to do the upfitting would cost approximately ten thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. That's to install lights, attachments for toolboxes, the detailing, that sort of thing. It is a white truck. Most of what you find right now on, if there's something available on the lot, is going to be white. To do the painting of it, it requires them to take the truck apart, and it's quoted at eleven thousand dollars to take it apart and paint it our famous English racing green. Is that the name?
British racing.
British racing green, yes. So in an effort to save money, we're recommending to not paint it and to leave the truck white and possibly look at for future vehicles and the DPW convert to a white fleet to make it easier to find vehicles in the future and save money in the process.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I might add that, obviously, our logo could be the green. You could still prominently, I think the first thing that catches your eye is the logo anyway. So if there'd be a way, we've, we talked about the police chief, obviously, they have different cars, some are undercover, some aren't. We've got different colors there. But again, if the consistent logo is on that white truck, it might even stand out more. I remember back in this argument when James was here, it was, well, Rochester Hills had white trucks. But if you look at their logo versus our logo, it's quite different, so.
I will say white's pretty common within the public works field, the private utility field, too. I mean, most public works or other private utility vehicles are going to be white. So it's a pretty noticeable. If someone sees that, they know it's probably a government or a public utility.
A number of years ago, though, the police went from white to black.
Correct.
Because black was tactical.
Correct.
I have some questions.
Whereas we want to be seen. We don't want to be hit.
Councilmember Jones?
I just, a couple of questions. So you said that vehicle was due to be replaced in this fiscal year. Why was it due to be replaced?
There is, should be a scorecard in the.
There is.
So it's, it's based on how old the vehicle is, mileage, use in the vehicle, wear and tear in the vehicle. I believe the scorecard shows it does have frequency.
I apologize. I did not see the scorecard. So I guess my thought is, I'm concerned about getting a white truck. How many green trucks do you have in your fleet?
They're all green except for our street sweeper's whites. Is the Vector white?
The Vector white. But you do have to change the color of the lettering to black when you go to a white vehicle. You can't either the color that is in the vehicle.
Yeah, the logo will have to be changed.
Okay, so, so how many are, just how many green trucks do you have?
They're all green.
I don't know how many you have in there. I just wanted to know how many you have.
Yeah.
Twenty-four. So that seems like a lofty goal to think that those all be white. So if this truck cannot be, I mean, it's, it's, part of me thinks this should just go in the master plan as far as what your needs are in the budget that we're discussing, you know, wrapping up in our, in our March meeting. And I'm just wondering if it could be repaired through insurance, if that's part of the problem, is that door, to just carry it out a little further when you could actually find a green truck and not have to buy kind of a white one that feels like you're kind of doing in a kind of an emergency way. Those are just my questions or thoughts.
Yeah, so the other route would be to, I guess, our plan was to, if we could purchase this vehicle and get that on our lot and have it detailed within a month, then take it in to get repaired through our insurance, no cost to us, and then sell the vehicle once it's been repaired. If we had to go and find something on a lot, probably be difficult. We might have to do just a typical place in order, and today's day, wait maybe a year, year and a half for that vehicle. It's doable, but we're trying to take, take advantage of our circumstance and save money along the way.
Councilmember Trent?
Oh, okay. So I, the, so are you still going to get the truck repaired and sell it and get the white truck?
Correct.
I mean, so that's, that's, so, but no cost because if it's hit by a private vehicle, I mean, they've got insurance. I mean, at, you know, you're saying that if you get a white vehicle, that you would think that eventually you would just start replacing all the vehicles with white vehicles? That, that's the plan?
Correct, yeah.
And then for a while, okay.
We wouldn't spend lots of money to go and change every single one.
But at one point, we had talked about changing the tagline and doing that the same way. So is that going to happen? Is that going to still on the table? We talked about changing the tagline, changing trucks to white. I don't know. I just thought, a year ago, we all said.
That's another can of worms that I'll let Nick handle.
Yeah, that's up to you guys.
One year ago, it was approved to start looking at that, but I don't know if I, at this point, if you're changing everything and you're going from green to white, I'd like to bring that forth again, if those are the type of changes you're looking at.
Our plan was to keep the same detailing, but just any colors that need to be changed throughout for.
There should be near your graphic standards manual what it looks like on a white vehicle. If it's a graphic standard, I mean, understanding the depth of rebranding that was done, I would say that there's a logo that says here, this is what it looks like on white.
Jason, do you have a comment?
Just to be a little helpful, too, all of our fleet right now, we've been three to five years old. So if you buy the white truck, it's going to take seven to ten years to transition all of those other trucks into white. So they added ten thousand dollar costs right now. If you painted this truck green to match what you got, would be a one-time cost because if you order it like you guys have recommended, through a regular repurchase and replacement program plan, that additional ten would not exist anymore. It'd be like a thousand or a couple thousand dollars to have a green truck. And what they've told us in the past is they wait for a run of green.
Correct.
To add you into that.
Yes.
Right.
I mean, you could ultimately paint the truck this time for the ten thousand just to keep it green and have it because it's available and not worry about that extensive cost in the future, or figure out the repair time and delivery of a new regular green truck.
Councilmember Hauser, did you have a comment?
Just a couple of quick questions here. So the truck as it is right now, is it drivable?
Yes.
Okay. You can still use it for its intended purpose other than it has a door issue, correct?
And we didn't get a return on repair estimate. Like, when it goes to the body shop, it's like ten or twelve thousand dollars worth of damage, but it might take a month to repair it. So my suggestion to Alec and Cory was maybe we could even, because the offender that damaged the vehicle can pay for a temporary rental vehicle until we get the truck back and then.
Right. And that's kind of where I'm getting at here because it's one of these things that, yes, I appreciate the fact that it's on the list here to be replaced sooner rather than later, but this seems to me a little bit of a bigger decision, you know, when it comes to, you know, the next generation of fleet of vehicles, what colors, what styles, and all this look and appearance, where if we can maybe come up with a short-term solution in order for us to have some serious or more consideration on this issue, that would be my proposal, is to, to go get it fixed. Let's see if we can, you know, have a conversation about whether or not, you know, when we need to replace this, if there's a better time. But I'd kind of like to see if we can get this thing fixed and use it as is. I'm not trying to put you guys in a hamstring here, but rather just to make sure that we're looking at this, you know, big picture-wise.
It's been a long time since something similar like this has happened, but before it was a total, not.
Right.
Yeah.
And if it was total, it's, it's a different scenario. But if we can still use it, and yeah, we have some inconvenience about having it repaired, that's another thing, you know, versus going out and doing an eighty thousand dollar new car or new truck here. That's just my thought.
Does it matter if half is green and half is white?
No.
I, I, yeah.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, I, I just.
The police wanted it for tactical reasons, but here it's not.
That's your.
It's just history, right? It's just precedent.
Yeah. And, and I don't have a particular care if it's green, white, or blue, or red. It's just a function of what's the long-term goal and how are we going to get there versus just, you know, coming up and saying, okay, now, today we're going to make them white.
If somebody, if somebody would like to come to DPW, I can show you like the white trucks and how you have to change the logo to match the background.
Sure.
So it's more noticeable.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Jones?
I kind of agree with Christian. If that's possible, I feel like this is a big purchase. If we can, you know, get it repaired and then.
I mean, it is up for the replacement program, so it is a truck. And we're just trying to shehandle it in to make it all work out.
Yeah, we need to make that clear. This was not, this was coming no matter what.
So based on its duty cycle, this is in line.
Jason's truck is also up for replacement this year. We've decided to push it back to try and save money. And, okay, his truck can still last for more years. I mean, we're not replacing it just to replace it.
Right.
Appreciate that, yeah.
This fiscal year, this, by, the end of the year, by December two thousand twenty-four.
Councilmember Sage?
So I also looked into, and I sent you the note, on whether we could, because we're incurring an additional cost outside of the vehicle to maintain a color scheme, right? So I think it's prudent to gradually transition back to the standard white, which is ninety percent of fleet vehicles. I looked at wrapping this type of vehicle, not only the vehicle itself and the body application. It's equal or more than the eleven thousand you cited on the special paint.
Yeah, wrapping is expensive.
So I will be in support of replacing the vehicle, number one, based on its duty cycle. So, and it's already contained in the budget, so.
Councilmember Trent?
Well, I mean, this is February, so are we talking ten months, or it was going to be replaced next month? Just a timeframe?
It was scheduled for this current fiscal year.
Right, not next, it was this.
June thirty.
So, oh, by June thirtieth.
Right.
But you're saying that they don't know if they can, they're going to find a green truck till, I don't know, what, two thousand thirty?
Before the accident.
What, are they that, are they that scarce?
Our coordinator was already in the process of researching quotes to order this like we would every other new vehicle, where you push an order and have it be manufactured after an order. So once the accident happened, we then looked at, okay, what might be available already on a lot so we can speed this process up so Cory isn't, our water firm isn't hindered with having a damaged vehicle. And so we're able to find this to outfit the situation. And that's where we're at.
So what was the thought process when they were, why to go to green if it's a difficult color to, to replace on the fly?
Mayor Bixson was here then?
I can't remember.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that one. I'm gonna take that one. In my, my team scheduled the assembly plans, and we had to put the orders in sequence by colors, and you had to mix them. And so low runners like this beautiful green in our truck don't get into the schedule very often. So white is what everybody has because it's what's available, it's what you can get, and that's why it's not a premium cost. So it's, it's just part of the auto industry.
I do not remember why.
It was the council, we had a lot of green things, and they wanted Rochester green, so we picked British racing green.
And it was part of the rebranding.
It was part of the rebranding.
So we went along with that. And it is a special color, a low run, additional cost to us, but then also additional time, as Nancy described as well. You, you don't just crank out a dark British racing green.
No.
Because they got to, they literally have to clean out the, the paint booth to do another run. I mean, it's, it's very costly for the OEM as well, so.
Just one.
Councilmember Jones?
One more, one more. I didn't realize you said it. So now it's clicking. It's already in your budget because it was going to be replaced by June. So this is not an extra ask.
Like I said, yeah, we were already researching.
Okay.
The ask is the, is the.
That's important.
Councilmember Trent?
Just to make clear, we. Just to make clear, we, I understand that part, but we're saying now, setting precedent, so our vehicles will match, they will then be starting to be replaced with white. Is that correct, right?
That's what we proposed.
That's the plan. That's the plan. I still-
We received a quote to paint it the green, but you know, to-
That, you're right. That was $11,000, so we can drop that.
Saying that because our vehicles are newer, it's going to be a while before they get to be white, but I think that's probably okay.
Yeah, I, I think I can live with that, but I still would like, I'd still like the tagline. At this point, if we're going to make this type of a change, I'd still like the tagline to be looked at, but I'm only one.
It's a separate meeting.
Is that a separate meeting?
And that can be a change on the vehicle down the road.
I, this is my business. Those vinyls can be taken off really quick and quick.
Mayor Protemsoviya?
Thank you. So since this is in the budget, we have a general ledger item on the memo. This is in our approved budget for $79,879. I'd like to make a motion to replace the Ford F-350 for the Water Division with a white vehicle.
Support. Motion by Mayor Protemsoviya, support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion, Maryland, Councilmember Trent.
And saying that then the replacements will continue to be white.
Yes.
That's all I would like to add on. So this discussion doesn't have to be gone into our memories, because we may not be here. I don't know.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Oh, Trent, yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
She was thinking about logos.
I was, I was like, I can't get away from it.
Enjoy your white truck.
Next is a receipt of the check register, if there's any questions. On to reports for the various boards of the commission. First report from the Historic Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just another reminder, Founder's Day is upcoming on March 10th, which is, will be conducted there at the Rochester Hills Museum at the Van Huisen Farm in, in the CAF barn. March 10th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., the key speaker will be Melissa Weiss, who heads the Leader Dogs for the Blind, and she'll give us historical context of how that organization has impacted the greater community here. We will have a bagpiper again this year, and the Shannon Dance Troop will perform at the end of the, end of the program.
And when is that again?
Sunday, March 10th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and we're going to get that added to the event calendar, so that it'll be out there for the public. It's at the museum in the CAF barn.
Thank you.
Um.
Go.
Yes.
Next.
Um, next, a receipt of a report from the Sister City Committee.
That's me. Yeah. So we had our meeting on Wednesday, January 31st. Councilmember Deb Jones and Steve Sage, it was their first meeting. And so we explored the committee's purpose, delved into historical context, and highlighted accomplishments from the previous year. We reviewed forthcoming meeting objectives and strategies, including plans for the upcoming joint Memorial Day Parade commencing at Avon Cemetery and concluding at the Rochester Hills Memorial Park. I think that's the right name. I don't know.
Memorial Point.
Whoops, that's the wrong name. Veterans Memorial Point, okay. On the intersection of Livernoy and Avon. I am happy to state that the Rochester Regional Chamber Foundation, headed by Maggie, will, committee will manage the event, and they are experts at events and parades. We will have a separate committee, as we had done for the past two years, collaborating with a representative from each city and two council members from each participating city. The city of Rochester will have previous council member Mark Ulbrich, who's now a resident, and Deb Jones and myself, with the, with the Rochester Hills representatives still being determined for this committee, officially the Memorial Day Committee. We discussed inviting area services organizations such as OPC and Paint Creek Center for the Arts to present to our committee. We also considered bringing in a speaker to discuss grant opportunities tailored to each city and explored ways to enhance, enhance board effectiveness with how to have an effective board. Speaker for that. So we set the schedule for future meetings, confirming that they will be held on the first Tuesdays of each month with the next, first Tuesdays of even months with the next meeting scheduled for April 9th. All right, I did it.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we talked about as well that the chamber's taking over the Memorial Day Parade, and there's a cost associated to that, of which half then we, so it costs $6,000 to do the parade. And the chamber is willing to kick in the $3,000 as well, and asking Rochester and Rochester Hills to kick in $1,500 for expense to the event. So I guess we probably need to consider that. Whether that's in the budget cycle or that's something we can do here. City Manager, would that be contained within, within this fiscal year? Then I'll make a motion to support the Memorial Day Parade in our portion of $1,500.
I support.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
I think it's nice that going back to the way it used to be.
I'm glad you joined us. I know Maggie will be.
Next is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Councilmember Trent?
Yes. So we are continuing to work on the 2024 budget by reviewing the areas of need and looking at new ideas and preparing for the goals and objective meetings for the full council and the department heads and city manager. We also discussed securing grants for the skate park with attention directed towards the Land and Water Conservation Fund. We also looked at an examination of the owned buildings and their contracts being reviewed as the Community House and Dinosaur Hill and the Clothes Closet. We talked about the entrance to the cemetery, putting that back on the radar, emphasizing its importance in our planning considerations. We talked about composting practices. I know that that is, is a little bit more complicated than I realized, but we were looking at, taking a look at other communities, Ann Arbor being one, to benchmark and, and see what they do for composting. We are continuing our efforts on the 2024 budget, and it, as I talked about, it involved essential areas, and we're exploring innovative ideas for the city's future at the three goals and objective meetings. So the first meeting was January 20th. The treasurer gave an overview of the current fiscal budget. The city department heads updated us on their needs beyond their allocated budget. It was an excellent presentation with a lot of input, and a few people from the community were present as well. On February 24th, the city council will present its overarching goals, which some call a wish list. On March 23rd, a final budget workshop is scheduled for the council to provide input and discuss the desired direction for the 2024 budget and associated projects based upon those two previous meetings. So from these three meetings, a comprehensive, financial, prudent budget document for the council's consideration will be delivered in May.
Very good.
Very thorough.
Any comments?
No.
Okay. On to the receipt of the report from the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I can, yeah, if you want to do it.
Yeah, I can do it. We had a perfect storm where we, of all the years I've been on, we did not have a quorum, which, you know, lots of different circumstances. So we did not have the public, we had the public hearing on the preserves, both those projects, but we weren't able to vote on it. So at the next meeting, we're going, at the March meeting, we're going to vote on it, but, so we didn't waste too much, lose too much time. We're going to have it come to the city council meeting, assuming it passes the Planning Commission, it will come immediately to the city council for their approval. So really, it was only a two-week delay, if you really look at how we worked it out. And then we also had a presentation, mixed-use development proposal for 120 and 134 Main, which was the village, is the village cleaner and the klizzen shop. And they came with a, a concept of lower retail and then apartments and then penthouse or condos, penthouse condos with, will be 55, 6,000 square feet, starting at 1.2 million dollar penthouses and, and things. So they are allegedly going to be coming to Planning Commission at the next Planning Commission meeting. What do you think, yeah?
No, sir. That was it.
And as I said, with Councilmember King going to be coming off that Planning Commission, we will have two openings that we need to fill quickly. Councilmember Trent?
Isn't it going to be a special project because of the five additional feet?
It will be a special project because they need an extra five feet.
And they need 40 spots approved, parking spaces.
So there's, and it's big.
It's big.
So I mean, everybody's going to need to look at it, but they, they want 14-foot ceilings in the penthouse, so they need extra.
14, wow.
Yeah, 14, not 12, not 10, 14. Next is a report from the Principal Shopping District.
I'll take care of that. And, Mr. Mayor, we need to appoint someone to lead from council today.
Yes.
But I got you. So we had the meeting on February 7th. We did end, end of year wrap-up preparing, so that when Kevin, the, the chairman would come in front of this board to give a year and wrap up at his budget time. So we did that, and then we went through the event calendar. And, and again, they go through the Promotions Committee first, then they look at every single event, say, good or bad, did you meet your goals, scrap it, get a new event. So they do that every year, and they dip promotions to that and then got to the PSD. And so they got rid of a couple, I think one new event, but mostly just refined them throughout the year. So that was a good thing. They, they talked about, obviously, Lanyup and the, we already have a, we already had a permit for next year, and MDOT let us close the road again, can shoot the fireworks. We got it within the day after Christie jumped back up.
We already got it.
Swear to God, she got it in her hands.
That is wonderful.
Yeah, so it's ready to go. So we, and Mr. Fox has said, put on my tab, the fireworks. So fireworks are covered, road can be closed, so we're good to go there. So that was very exciting. Chris Kringle Market, so we didn't have enough time this year, but you've been there. It's, if it's a nice weather weekend, whoa, it gets a little intense. So it's pretty intimidating. So we're going to look at wrapping it around Walnut. And Taylor's got plenty of time to plan it out, could give us 37 more vendors, and she had a waiting list, so it could be pretty cool. Spread it out, go around past Corner Bar and bring it down the street. So we have to worry about some power logistics, but we're already working on that with Dan, so that was great. On the gift card match program, like enormously successful. So they got to, they had some angry people over the years where you're waiting in line, and all of a sudden you get to the door, and it's like, sorry, we ran out. So there's two ways to do it. More gift cards, more sponsors, which is probably doable, but you don't want to take the specialness away either. So they got a really good rhythm this year where they figured, went down, Christie walked down the line and said, how many, and you can't have, gave her a one or two. You can get one or two certificates. So, and when she got to how many they had, said to everybody, just so you know, by the time you get up there, there's not going to be any available. So, and people appreciated that, so they didn't stay in line. People got there at 1:30 and didn't know until 5:00.
I actually observed that. I was in town, and I did know what was going on, and I saw the big line. And I did see her actually go out talking to the people.
Yeah, it worked much better. People were very thankful for that. So they kind of refined that process. But the question of the whole meeting was the PSD renewal is up. So back in Wayback Machine, five years ago, city council approved the PSD structure for the SAD, the Special Assessment, that goes on the business owners, actually the landlords, and then they choose to pass it on to their tenants or not. So at, five years ago, they set the fee at 33 cents a square foot if you're in the core, then 26, depends if you're on the first floor, second floor, basement, how far away you are from the core. It's a sliding scale. If you do the math, especially in the last five years, a dollar doesn't buy you a dollar five years later, right? So it's not worth a dollar. So it kind of hamstringed them. So after five years, they're way behind. So they had the discussion amongst themselves, talking to business folks, they're going to come back with an adjustment to the PSD. There's a scheduled public hearing, it'll get notified to all the business people. They've got it online, surveys, everything to make sure everybody's comfortable with what they're doing. It looks like they're headed towards a 25% increase over five years. So it's not 25, 25, 25, it's 25% over five, five years. So 5% is totally reasonable. That'll build in inflation. It's, it's literally, to some people, $29 a year difference. Nobody pays a big chunk. They're moving a cap from 9,000 to 10,000, again, for inflation, and it looks like they're going to bring that forward to the city council for a public hearing, setting a public hearing soon. It's, I think it's up June 30th, so we've got time. So that was the bulk of the real meeting, and that's about it.
Very good. Next, a report from the Asset Committee that met today. Mayor Protemsoviya.
I think Councilmember Hauser.
My turn tonight, yeah. So the Asset Management Committee meeting was today, 4 o'clock, and Mr. Mayor, you were there. Mayor Protemsoviya, you were there as well. And, and just very briefly, that the Asset Management Committee looks at our roads, our bridges, our underground infrastructure and utilities, and identifies those areas that need improvement and part of our capital improvement program. And today was quite a lengthy meeting because there was lots to discuss. The majority of the conversation talked about water and sewer improvements that are on the horizon for calendar years 2025 and 2026. And what we've tried to do is identify those areas in the city that kind of needed the most, what areas are kind of a priority for us. And so we've tried to identify those streets, those neighborhoods that we want to put at the top of the line. So that was a discussion today. There was also a, a very good conversation with representative from the DDA when we talked about cost and associated, you know, who's going to pitch in for what with respect to areas within the DDA downtown, whether it's above ground, underground, or a combination thereof. And then we also had some conversations about the parks, you know, improvements to the parks, cemeteries as well, Dinosaur Hill, and then the facilities. We talked about Community House, the DPW complex, and then, of course, the heating and cooling system in our own city hall here. One topic that came up that was resoundly not inclined to be approved was Verizon wanted to install a cell tower over on the, actually Rochester Hills side of town, over off of Livernoy there, I believe, right? And it just seemed like that was not a good idea, and I don't think we're going to do anything further with that. But again, the, the main takeaway here is, is the Asset Committee, along with DPW, did a very good job of identifying those areas in town that need improvements, but also simultaneously coordinating those improvements to make sure that they work in conjunction with the developments that are going on in the city, whether it's developers through the Planning Commission, or alternatively, road repairs that MDOT is doing. So we try and really sequence and schedule those repairs, so it doesn't create a situation where it creates even more gridlock contention in our infrastructure. That's all I've got.
Mr. Mayor, I think it might be proven, because we're going to want to do this probably every meeting until 2026, that MDOT's put us on notice now that it looks like the project, which, for them, it goes from M59 north all the way to Tinket, which is rehab in various ways, M150. So for our town, it's from, basically from the bridge, the South Bridge, to Tinkin. They just resurfaced our north piece, so it's a temporary fix, but it'll be three years out by the time they get to it. So they're looking at letting a contract and going up a bit at 25, and then do the work in 26. So if you've driven south Rochester Road all the way to 59, that's not going to make it. So they're doing patches right now to try to figure it out. So we will start a campaign to let everybody know how important that is. It's a, it will probably be, maintain some traffic. It won't be like Main Street where we shut everything down, but we'll get way ahead of the game. So every time we get a chance to talk about it, it's not our money, it's not our money, but we have $3 million with the water main that some of it, again, Cory informed us is 100 years old, and here's our opportunity to, once the road dripped up, get ahead of it by bonding for that big project to try to take care of that. So more to come, but we're going to let people know the state's, it was 27, then 25, then 24, then 26. So I'm pretty sure they're locked in now because of the condition of the road south of us. So just I'll let you know that.
from the tour of Rochester Community Schools at the Administration Building. Councilmember Jones, you want to take that?
So, yeah, maybe I combine those two together. Is that okay? All right. So last Monday, we took a tour of the Admin Building. There were four council members and... Lots of city employees that came. And it was fascinating. It was, I think, surprising in some ways. It looked a little like everyone sort of left. And there is definitely work that needs to be done there. But it was a great tour, and we learned some history about the building. And I'm very happy we went. It sort of starts this process as we are considering partnering with RCS to keep that building. So this is the first step in making some of those decisions. We met tonight and presented in front of the Board of Education because we needed their approval to even move forward with getting some financial numbers together to see if this is feasible. Also, to talk to them about what the cost would be, maybe a dollar, hopefully, to get the building. And they're... They just had an appraisal come back. They're trying to fine-tune that so they can let us know what the value is of the building. We had a great reception by the Board of Ed. They all had nodded and had some great comments about how much this means to our community. It obviously saves face for RCS a bit if that building is not turned down. So they really have skin in the game to make this work. There was some suggestions about, sort of like the public library that's used by our communities around us. Had we thought about going out to Rochester Hills and Oakland Township and to see if they would get involved at all. I'm looking at some grants. I'm hoping to meet with some legislators to talk about any grant money that's available. But it will probably turn out to be a millage that will be put out to the community. Our goal would be to have that happen by November, so it's kind of a fast process if we go down this path. And then it is going to be left up to the community if they support it. And if they don't, then the building probably will turn into something else. So did I cover it okay?
Yeah, I think so. I think we emphasize the, you know, timing is important. We need to move fast, but we need to meet with them. We were clear that we can't go forward without having some arrangements. So my goal is to try to meet with them, and I'll talk with the city manager and figure out who... But before our budget meeting on the 24th, hopefully have some kind of tentative thing. Yeah, we think this can work. Here's some ideas, or not. And then we can talk about it at our... So... But we have to have certain decision timeline things going on. But the board, I was pleasantly surprised. They were all very enthusiastic. So that's a good thing.
Before you close, if it's okay, I'd love to have Raya also included on our board reports since I'm the liaison for them.
Yeah, I think, didn't we... Haven't we had Raya before?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Not Ra-Ra, Raya.
Yeah, no, we have. We just need to know when they meet.
Okay. I... Okay, so I had a meeting since our last council meeting. So if you don't mind, I'm going to do it quick, and I will give you when we meet.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. So we sponsored something on fentanyl. We had the Fentanyl Fathers come and talk about fentanyl murder, which we're calling it now. It was the most riveting, amazing presentation. You could hear a pin drop. It was every grade level at every high school and then a community event. And it was incredibly powerful. And it really... I heard such strong feedback from the kids. So we had people that have lost in our community, Stony Creek parents, Rochester parents, Adams' parents have all lost their kids to fentanyl. And it's something good to be talked about. So that was really exciting and very moving. We have an event called Overcoming Frustration and Anger, and this is a workshop for young ones. It's going to be held at Chief Financial... This is on our website, all of these presentations. We have an event we do every year, and all the council members have been invited. It's the youth recognition reception where youth is in our community within the RCS district, whether it be the private schools or public, who have gone above and beyond are honored. It's a wonderful event. Again, it's on our website. So if you know any students in our community that have done extra things, gone above and beyond, overcome any obstacles, we would love to honor them. Our good friend... Oh, no, this is not her. This is not it. Online safety. We've got at Hart Middle School. It will be for all grade levels in the middle schools. And it has to do with... Everything to do with your phone and communicating and how parents can watch out for things that are going on with our youth.